Welcome to the Brunswick County Board of Education meeting. At this time, if you would stand with me for the invocation. Gracious Father in heaven, we come before you this afternoon, this evening, to give you thanks for all this good and great. We ask that you be with us as we go through tonight and every other night as we come forward and we seek to do the best for what is right for Brunswick County schools, for it's in your precious name we pray. Amen.
Do you want me to wave? A flag, ladies and gentlemen. United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and just for all.
At this time, we have public address by Kayla Roman.
I have Kayla's written statement, but she was arranged to be called alone because I've been happy and she feels really good. Okay, I'm sure that she was doing a much better job than I would.
Good evening. I'm Lori Bolt. I'm a parent of two graduated South Brunswick High School students this year, and I'm speaking on behalf of Kayla Roman, as well as several other parents who could not be here this evening. So please accept from Kayla Roman, on my behalf, the submission to the board my written statement. Good evening, Board. My name is Kayla Roman, and I'm a senior enrolled at South Brunswick High School. Graduating from high school has not only been a huge milestone in my life, but as well as my family's, due to the fact that I'm a first-generation high school graduate. I earned an early graduation, however, I opted out so I could walk with my class in June. But then this pandemic happened. Not only has it affected millions of people, but it's affected my family as well. Due to taking care of my father, since his work-related injury, and financially helping out my mother, I'm unable to take one trip back to North Carolina. I'm able to take one trip back to North Carolina. After the board made the decision to give us a traditional ceremony like we had wanted, and as I went down to North Carolina for the senior parade, it gave me hope and confidence that I'd be able to walk with my class at a later date. I appreciated the virtual option for all my fellow classmates whom not, who would not be able to participate in the traditional ceremony, so it allows everyone to have some type of ceremony that fits their needs. However, since it was short notice and the parade was two weeks before, I couldn't make it to this graduation. I feel like planning this live ceremony now would be the most beneficial. I know some schools were speaking on doing a traditional graduation on their football fields, but we will have to follow state protocols, so thank you for your time. And again, from Kayla Roman. And then I have written-
Lori, did you say she did not, was not able to attend the virtual?
That's correct. She had to make a choice, and she chose to not do the virtual so that she could actually walk live with her fellow students, because that was the agreement from the board at the May meeting. That is correct. So that's the end of Kayla's statements. Others were prepared to be here but had chosen because of some Facebook posts that they did not want to come out for fear of some situations that were stirring up around the county. So I have received their comments, and with your permission, I'd like to use their time to read that. Is that okay? Okay. This is from Heather Thorpe, mother of a North Brunswick High School 2020 senior in Lila, North Carolina. The graduation that was held at North Brunswick was not an experience that was good even under the circumstances that our nation was facing. I feel that no consideration was given for the graduates or their families. It was rushed and lasted three minutes. The microphone malfunctioned during my son's name, leaving only his last name pronounced. I ask that the board have a proper ceremony for the graduates and their families, so that they will have a different memory. They do not deserve the memory of a somber, rushed, and malfunctioning graduation. And that was from Heather Thorpe. And then I'm going to read one from Tara Combs. Again, she had planned to be here until this afternoon. Good evening, Board. My son Taylor is a 2020 graduate of South Brunswick High School. We participated in the recording ceremony on Thursday, May the 28th. While I acknowledge the time spent by South staff planning the event, it's hard to embrace knowing it came out that way. We were rushed through the school into a hall where we were kept apart from our son. No photographer was there to capture any small moment. We may have liked to stated in the letter, like we may have stated in the letter mailed home. I saw later there were pictures taken of other families at later time slots. Not many staff were present to congratulate the seniors. The students were quiet, almost mournful. After choosing between loved ones to attend, I'm assuming their hearts weren't in it. Our youngest son had to wait in the car while we listened for Taylor's name to be called, a moment I've thought about since this first day of kindergarten. Each day, very quickly handed their diploma, each student very quickly handed their diploma, paused for a picture, and went to an X on the gym floor. Principal Hodges announced them graduates, instructed them to turn their tassels, and we were sent to the back doors. Afterwards, we saw pictures of junior marshals gathered closely to take pictures and wondered why the seniors weren't given the larger group number. When did graduation become more about the junior marshal instead of the senior? Moving forward with a traditional graduation seems unreasonable now. Even with the wrong date printed on the diplomas, I doubt seniors would return them to have it reissued. Many have accepted the disappointment and are moving on from it. I would like to see each school provide a celebration of sorts for our seniors if the traditional ceremony is dismissed. A way for the students to be together again, to congratulate one another, to celebrate their accomplishments, and to gain closure to this chapter in their lives. Thank you for your time, Ms. Tara Combs. And then, if I may, use three minutes to talk on behalf of myself and my family. May I? Thank you. Good evening. My name is Lori Bolt, and I ask that my remarks be entered into the minutes of this meeting. My husband Terry and I are proud parents of Jack and Luke, 2020 graduated seniors of South Brunswick High School. Sorry. Like most parents, we are advocates for the youth of our community, and that is why I'm addressing the members of the Brunswick County Board of Education this evening. Sorry. My purpose for speaking to you is to provide feedback on the virtual graduation held at South Brunswick High School, and to advocate for these graduating seniors to participate in a more celebratory event this summer. On Thursday, May the 28th, my family arrived at South Brunswick High School at our designated time slot. We were quietly ushered down empty halls, and my twins were placed in a line. The 10 seniors in their group were instructed to walk six feet apart into the gym as pomp and circumstance was briefly played and abruptly stopped as they located their places to stand again six feet apart. Parents across the gym struggled to take pictures of their graduates. The seniors were called one by one to receive their diplomas. As soon as the seniors were declared graduates, we were all ushered quietly out the back door. I will never forget seeing the tears of a grandmother next to me saying, "It took me longer to get dressed than to see my granddaughter graduate." I have always been an emotional person at weddings and funerals, and obviously right here in front of the Board of Education, through all many rites of passage. I didn't even have a minute to get choked up as I witnessed my twins graduating from high school. It truly felt like a wake, not a graduation. A fellow parent at South Brunswick posted after the virtual graduation, "The graduation today at South Brunswick was a total disappointment. I realize there are restrictions in place, but the school itself could have done more, more decorations, more staff, more time congratulating the graduates." Basically, they called the names of 10 students. Once they received their diplomas, the principal announced them graduates, the back doors were open, and it was over. Pathetic. They should have placed, passed out the diplomas at the parade on Southport. And another fellow parent at North Brunswick said, "We were ordered to stand six feet apart and treated like we were toxic." I'd like to draw your attention to the picture of 19 junior marshals from South Brunswick High School, and I sent a picture earlier today, and in fact, my daughter was among one of those 19. They were posing for a picture, and they were not required to be six feet apart. How is it that graduating seniors had to social distance, yet my daughter and her 18 friends did not have to? On Tuesday, May the 6th, the board heard pleas from four articulate Brunswick County seniors asking for more time to plan a meaningful ceremony. You remain committed to the virtual graduation for these seniors because it was something. Yes, in my opinion, it was something, but it was something unremarkable. So moving forward, let's turn the page. Let's make something memorable. Let's make something remarkable for these seniors. As the COVID-19 guidance of high school graduation ceremonies published on May the 1st from our Governor Cooper stated two times, two times, "Districts and schools are encouraged to engage with students and families on the best solutions for the communities." At South Brunswick, I'm not aware that any student or parent was asked to weigh in on the virtual or provide guidance or support for it, or suggestions. Now let's make a truly collaborative effort between schools and students and parents. And I appreciate Dr. Oats. He's been very responsive, as well as Mr. Miller, to phone conversations and email exchanges regarding this matter. And in fact, in an email that Dr. Oats had sent to me, he said, "In speaking with each principal this week, I informed that they should, informed them that they should begin planning for a traditional ceremony starting next week." That was yesterday. Because the culture of each school is different, my recommendation is for the task force to be formed for each school. I'm certain that students and parents at the respective high schools welcome the opportunity to plan and execute a ceremony befitting these situations. The event should create an experience post-virtual graduation that will celebrate the accomplishments of each and every 2020 graduate in Brunswick County. So I'm asking you, I'm asking you in these changing times, let no 2020 graduate in Brunswick County feel left behind. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bolt.
Pardon me, ma'am?
Thank you.
Yes, and I believe Joanne, she is here. She may not have been able to make it. Thank you very much.
So Ms. Peabody is not in the room? Thank you.
Hi. Hi, good evening.
Hi.
My name is Joanne Barrett Peabody. Excuse me. I'm the mother of a senior at West Brunswick High School. I'm here to tell you about our graduation experiences. You may recall that my son Dean Peabody spoke in front of this board at the May meeting, asking you to wait to hold graduation. Excuse me. Your response was a message to the district that a live graduation would be scheduled when the health department allowed it. I encouraged my son to trust you to attend the virtual graduation, that the board was doing their best under difficult circumstances. Once upon a time, I was a Board of Education member myself, and I do know how difficult it is to navigate your district members' expectations. I believe that everyone shows up to do their best work, but your best this time was to limit each graduate to two guests and to enforce their separation using mass gathering limits as the shield to defend your decision while allowing everyone else to ignore social distancing requirements and mass gathering limits. Your actions told my son and the other graduates that they alone did not matter. Before I go further, I do want to commend the entire staff at West Brunswick High School for doing an amazing job creating the remembrance walk through the high school. Considering this district tied their hands, it was superbly done. Every staff member was lovely, kind, and enthusiastic. It was the one true highlight of the day. It helped ease my son's hurt and confusion caused by this district's serious disconnect between what it said and what it did. Overall, my son's experience was one of sadness and disappointment. Dean hasn't received his yearbook and was not told until after graduation that he would even still get it. He was missing a court he earned. Do you know he did not receive a diploma on graduation day? No one bothered to tell us why or when he would either. Interestingly, throughout this memory walk, our students and their guests were the only ones required to social distance. Staff members directed us at every turn, strict that we stayed on our squares, placed about 12 feet apart throughout the building. These staff members were standing together in groups. Student ambassadors were also standing closely together. We saw staff throughout the building sitting next to one another. One staff member was stationed at a sign using each graduate's cellphone to take a picture. No gloves were worn, and no hand sanitizer used before or after each picture was taken. Two of your board members, Dr. Oats, and also the principals of West stood upon the graduation stage, shoulder to shoulder, for their own smiling group picture. Imagine my surprise, frustration, and sadness when I later saw on Facebook that the junior class marshals were also allowed to take group pictures in front of the school, and on the very same stage, my son was rushed across, but with no friends or classmates in attendance. Please see the pictures that were submitted to the board for reference, so you can see what I'm talking about. We've been told you will now do a poll to see who wants a live graduation, having ignored approximately 1,100 district signatures on an early May student petition asking for one. That's a little like feeding a starving person bread and water and then asking them they would rather have had steak. So how can this district move forward? You can make a motion and vote to actively direct and support each high school's administration in planning an event for the entire graduating class to take place before August 1st of this year. Phase 2 of the Governor's Executive Order Number 141 states that educational institutions are exempt from mass gathering limits. Yes, I know, you were saying that. The Governor's Phase 2 FAQ says that is not the intent of the order, but the FAQs are not legally binding like the order is. The Governor has clearly and legally stated his intentions within the order as regards other establishments. He chose not to do so as pertains to schools. His order states that it's up to you.
I'm good, as you guys. Are you okay, Madam Attorney? If she finishes?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Attorney.
I appreciate that. The Governor's order states it's up to you, the superintendent of school board, to determine what is best for your own district. You've cleverly stated that the health department requires you to prohibit more than 10 people in a gathering, but that is also not true. The FAQs specifically state that's only a recommendation, and that the order states you are exempt from that. Further, the health department works for the Governor's office, not the other way around. I'm asking you as a mom and as a voting member of this district to do the next right thing. Make a motion and vote to pick a date and have a senior event where my son can have his yearbook signed, take group pictures, and know this community values as a class. My son walked under a sign painted at his school that says, "Without memories, there is no culture." What will be the culture created by this board if you take no action on our request? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peabody. At this time... Ms. Lloyd?
Can he hear me if I'm here? Mr. Ben?
Just speak, ma'am.
Okay. So, good evening. I was asked to come present regarding the roles and responsibilities of the school counselors in Brunswick County. I did bring someone from each level in case there's a question that comes up that I do not have in my presentation. So for elementary school, I have Kim Young that works at Belleville Elementary School. For middle school, I have Deion DeBerry. She works at Shiloh Middle. And then for high school, I have Nathan Bell. He works at West Brunswick. So I wanted to start with just a little bit of the background of a school counselor. Our role actually began as a vocational guidance movement at the start of the 20th century. So when we were coming through school, we were called guidance counselors, and that was because initially it started with English teachers that were added vocational courses, and they were providing guidance in terms of career development. Over time, that has grown to more professional requirements in terms of our education. So we are now no longer guidance counselors, we are now professional school counselors. In North Carolina, a professional school counselor has to complete an approved master's degree program with a regionally accredited college or university. So there are a lot of components to our programs, but we cannot be employed as a school counselor without that master's level degree. School counselors are expected to apply their professional training in schools in order to support academic success. So everything we do is to promote that graduation. We work together to make sure our students are successful in the next chapter of their lives. There are a lot of components that go into that, though. We don't just look at academics. We cover domains such as the academic development, career development, and very importantly, the personal and social development of all of our students. So this comes from the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction Job Description, the major functions of a professional school counselor. We have a development and management of a comprehensive school counseling program. So that means we do have a guidance curriculum. We have guidance essential standards that we address. They are integrated into other content areas and/or taught within classrooms by the school counselor. We do individual student planning. We do preventive and responsive services, and then we are a system of support. Delivering a comprehensive school counseling program is something that is monitored. We actually facilitate program plans that are developed by ASCA, and I'll get to that in just a moment. And we are accountable. We have to be accountable through data, just like all other categories. So here are the governing associations for professional school counselors. We have the American School Counselor Association, the North Carolina School Counselor Association, and then K-CREP is the accreditation for our university programs. So what this looks like locally. We have a total of 31 school counselors in our district. For the elementary, we have 11, including the Waukama School Counselor. At middle school, including Waukama and Coast, because they do have those students as well, we have 10. And then for high school, including Coast and early college high school, we have 12. Again, the total is 31.
So how many does Waukama and the Coast actually have?
They have one.
One each?
One each, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
So I wanted to show some ratios. The national recommendation for-
One for middle, one for elementary, you said?
No, sir. We have two at all of our middle schools currently. Except Waukama has one for K-8, and then the Coast has one for 612. So the national recommendation by the American School Counselor Association is a ratio of one school counselor to 250 students. The current national average is one counselor to 430 students. The current state average for North Carolina is one counselor to 368 students. So again, to break it down locally, I took our lowest ratio, which is on the left, and our highest ratio on the right. So for the highest ratios, in a traditional elementary school, we currently have 1 to 623 students. With the projected populations based on redistricting, that could go to one counselor for every 700 students or higher, based on those projections. Our traditional middle school, we have one counselor to 514 students at our highest ratio. And then our traditional high school is 100, I mean, excuse me, one counselor to 369 students. So we talk a lot about our multi-tiered systems of support, and so I wanted to connect that with what school counselors do during our comprehensive programs. So the Tier 1 are universal, school-wide program components. We do the implementation and integration of the guidance essential standards. So just like a math content has standards and your ELA has standards, school counselors have standards as well. We, our elementary school counselors do a lot of classroom lessons. That looks more like a classroom presentation at a middle school or high school. It's not quite the same, it doesn't have quite the same look. Some of our elementary school counselors are in a rotation, whereas at middle school, high school, the presentations are more need-based, not as regular. We do a district-wide social-emotional universal screener, so every student is screened on, with that survey. And then we also support school-wide social-emotional integration into other content areas. Ideally, all of our standards are integrated into other contents naturally. That takes a lot of planning, and sometimes we don't have that ability to integrate quite as well, so we also teach that independently. We do have the social-emotional curriculum. Many of our schools use Sanford-Harmony currently, or they are exploring other options, and we're looking at some for the middle school, high school, trying to explore as part of our district MTSS team. For Tier 2, which is our supplemental service, we do small groups. It's for behavior skills, social skills, grief counseling, attendance, self-esteem, any need that comes up that can impact a student's academics or functions, we have a small group for that. Students are grouped according to their needs, according to their ages, and according to personalities sometimes. Just because you have a similar need as someone else doesn't mean that you would benefit from the same group. So we have a lot of support groups going on. That can also look like mentors and check-in, check-out for some of our behavior supports. And then we have Tier 3 services, which are the individualized intensive services, and those are going to be the individual counseling and often the referrals to our community agencies. So this is a long list, and I don't want to read the whole thing to you, but you can get an idea of this is what an elementary school counselor does. We have the classroom lessons. We have the screeners. We have the small groups and lunch bunch groups, which is often a time that we can do some social skill development, is during that lunchtime. We try to not pull students from their content. We need that core academic piece, but if you're struggling with the social-emotional concern, that's going to impact your function in the classroom. So we do have to address it, but we try to balance that with the content schedule. At elementary school, they are the IST facilitators. And so you can see the meetings, they are Section 504 coordinators, there's parent communication, we have attendance groups, we have the threat assessment protocols, and that's something that, again, a lot of these happen across the academic groups. But for elementary school, we had 48 reported through March. That's about an hour per incident that our school counselors devote to supporting those students. There's different team membership, there are homebound coordinators, they work with our social workers on McKenna Vento as a liaison, and then they also coordinate other programs, such as Red Ribbon Week, holiday supports, or counseling supports, such as Lower Cape Fear Life Care, which was previously hospice, and then our Coastal Horizon parent groups. Moving into middle school, you'll see some of the same program components, but it varies a little bit more. Threat assessments were a little bit higher at the middle school, or a lot higher. We have 92 reported through March. They have the same membership. They are doing classrooms. They are doing small groups. They're doing the individuals, the 504 coordination. They have also have worked with our middle school CDC, or career development coaches, excuse me, to work on their four-year plans. But prior to that position being added, the counselors did implement the inventories, the interest inventories, and the planning for four-year plans. So we're very thankful to have the career development coordinators in place that can help facilitate that for us more consistently and effectively.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes, sir.
A note here that you said that there were 92 reported threat assessment protocols done, taking typically one to two hours per incident. Could you give some insight onto how that process works as well?
Yes, sir.
What's explained on the threat assessment?
So anytime a concern of self-harm, harm to another person, or both, that is reported to a trained facilitator for the threat assessment protocol. Our trained facilitators are the school counselors, the school psychologists, the school behavior specialist, and the school social workers. And then we have a threat assessment protocol that we go through that involves a team of individuals that know the student, the school administrator, the parent, and we look at the planning component of the threat. We know that some students, I think we've all been at a place where we say things that we don't mean when we're angry, so we have to still address that. That's either a teachable moment or something that needs some of these small groups or individualized support systems to make sure that we are addressing the needs of a student. We do have some where they are very extreme cases where there is a true threat, a true threat to safety of either that child or another child, and we have to address that mental health component. So we do make the appropriate referrals, and as always, the parents are involved as part of that conversation.
Dr. Oats, I think any case that law enforcement has within schools as well-
Yes, sir.
-goes through your same threat assessment.
Yes. So we have involved law enforcement. We involve the appropriate agency. So there have been some that, yes, sir, the law enforcement is involved. We've had times where Department of Social Services is involved. So we try to involve all of those community agencies to make sure that we're addressing every child's safety and staff. Did that? Okay.
And I need to add, also, that's very valuable to us as law enforcement officers, once you do that assessment as well.
And it's nice to have somebody that, in the buildings, that knows our students as well. So it gives a different view to the team, but by having somebody that is a regular in our building, you also have a connection with that student, and I think that's very important to the people on that team. High schools, they again do small group counseling. They did the social-emotional universal screener. They had the individual counseling sessions. A lot of times at a high school, you'll have the kid that pops in during lunch, and they have an academic question or a scholarship question. So some of theirs are more consultations versus actual counseling, so we tried to include some numbers for that. Threat assessment protocols, team membership, the homebound coordinator, a lot of these are very consistent across all of the levels. Towards the end of the list, you'll see the letters of recommendation for scholarships and college admissions, the individual senior meetings to review transcripts, the ACT needs, college applications, and then they help with the BCC, or Brunswick Community College Enrollment Assistance and Advising.
Ms. Lloyd, you mentioned that in middle school, they- Ms. Lloyd, you mentioned that in middle school, they have the four-year plans.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that picked up at the high school?
Yes, ma'am.
And it's just a continuum?
Yes, ma'am, I'll get to that, actually.
Okay.
I think it's been two slides.
Thank you.
Additional program coordination, AVID, I didn't say that with middle school, but they do AVID as well, scholarship. At the high school level, the counselors coordinate the AIG plans, they do AP coursework and testing, NCVPS, which is the Virtual Public School. They have a lot of responsibilities, as you can see there, in addition to the ones such as the holiday support. So making sure our students have the book bags for food. And again, counseling supports from the community agencies, such as the Lower Cape Fear Life Care, which was previously the hospice. They've helped provide some grief supports and Coastal Horizons. At the high school, the counselors are more involved with enrollments. Our middle schools do often provide supports with enrollments, helping the student tour around and helping, introducing them to the new school. At the high schools, it's a little bit different because you do have to match transcripts from prior counties, prior schools, to the coursework that we provide. And making sure, especially if they're coming from out of state, that they meet the North Carolina graduation requirement. So they are more involved with the enrollment process than some of the other levels. Scholarships is a question that has been brought up before, how we make our students and families aware of scholarships. So our schools all have a website that is, that lists all their scholarships that are available. We have some national scholarships, but we also have a lot of local. So it's difficult to have one website, because something that's offered in the north end by an agency, there may not be offered in the west Brunswick yet. So we have to be very specific to the school. Schools do use apps, such as the Remind app, and this wasn't one I'm as familiar with, but it was banned, to send out information and reminders. There are scholarship newsletters, there are announcements on the intercoms, and if you're in our schools in the mornings, you can hear them rattling off different scholarship opportunities. Information is mailed out to staff, so sometimes we may have one that's specific to a healthcare course or a specific interest in, so that the staff can help advertise those for our counselors. There are senior advisory teachers that, again, make sure seniors are aware of the scholarships that are available. And then because not everybody has access to internet services, and we do have the hard copies that are available for all of our scholarships, and those are in the counseling office. So the four-year planning. In the past, we have had four-year plans, but they were not as consistent as we would have liked across the district. So again, with the addition of the middle school career development coordinators, that is definitely helping streamline that process and making it more consistent. This past year, plans were created in a Google Doc, and then they were shared with school counselors. Ms. Meligan, you were asking about the continuation, so they were shared. Fortunately, we've also adopted a platform called Major Clarity that will definitely make that a more effective process. It starts in the middle school, and it's a lot to explain, but really, after looking at it, it really offers a lot of benefits to our students and to our staff. It has a parent component, the school counselors will have access to it, and the students can continuously monitor their progress toward specific pathways. So it's not just the CTE pathways, but if you want to do JROTC for four years, or you want to do fine arts for four years. So it helps them track their specific pathway. And because it communicates with our power school, it allows them to see what courses they still have, what they've completed as part of their pathway. So there are a lot of benefits to that. So while we have had four-year plans in the past, and yes, they were communicated and followed at the high school, I do think this new platform and the addition of the CDCs will help just to make that a more effective process for all. And the four-year plans are used during registration meetings. So this year, registration was, you know, a little bit atypical, but we do try to use those four-year plans in terms of helping the students plan for their academic future. Just like with me, I, you know, sometimes change my mind on a daily basis, and we know kids are going to do that too. So it's not something that's set in stone, but it is a guideline. And with the program that they're adding, the Major Clarity, it can connect back to interest inventories, and it does connect back to scholarships, and it does connect back to a lot of additional resources for the student. Oh, I kind of skipped through this already, but the school counselors do meet individually with students on their caseloads. Some of them use also the classroom presentation to provide initial information, so they kind of do that class presentation, that universal, school-wide, or grade-level-wide, I guess, presentation, and then they do meet with the students. I did kind of say that.
I have a question about the middle school plan, your four-year plan, is that good?
Yes, sir.
So you said that we're doing the plan for four-year plans on middle school children. But how do we ensure that all the kids are recently born in the year? Does somebody want it, you want it, or you just have to make sure by half week in a year, have you got a plan in place?
So that is something that we start with the Major Clarity platform, that will allow us to more effectively monitor that. So in the past, because they were paid uniforms, depending on the schedule, so yes, you could go to the school counselor and ask to see their calendar to know when they met at a particular class, to know if it was completed. But by having it in this electronic platform, we'll have a more concrete way to determine who it has. And the benefit of this also is that when new students enroll, because it communicates with power school, it will populate the student in, so they will also be able to create an account.
Okay, so I have, one of the things I hear is that not every student gets reached to have this plan in a timely manner, especially in middle school where we have a lot of crises. You know, that's just a too much time in kids' lives, and they tell me that they don't always get to see somebody quickly in a year. I don't know, just checking on that, and working with these CTE, can I put it well, to integrate that into their four-year plan, is this appropriate?
Yes, sir. So the CDC and then the CTE, special pops, individuals, they do work with our school counselors to make sure that we have integrated everybody's needs, and they actually work with us closely. They join our PLTs that I have with school counselors to make sure we have all the same plays, that we are addressing in classroom needs, and that we're presenting the information to students in a timely manner. Again, this is their first full year, so we were a work in progress this year, and then when COVID happened, it kind of, it really messed up our plans for this year, but we definitely have a better outline for next year to make sure that every student is reached. It has always been our goal to make sure that they are reached, but just like with the new procedure, there's always room for improvement, and so I think we have a definite plan moving forward to next year.
Great, thank you.
Okay, another question that comes up with the four-year plan is that parent involvement. So our schools do host curriculum nights prior to registration. For parents of ninth graders, they host freshman orientations. Parents are able to review registration selection sheets, are encouraged to contact school counselors with questions. And then school counselors meet with the parents during and after school. And some communicate by phone, or during a pandemic, everybody does. But there was a lot of communication to make sure that we are getting the students the courses that they need. Any other questions about four-year plans? Okay.
Ms. Lloyd, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
In relation to the four-year plan and what kids are putting on their four-year plan. When a child is setting up a four-year plan, is going to be a liberal arts major in high school, which means they're not zeroing in on anything particularly. What does the counseling move about that?
So I may have to refer to my high school counselor on this one, but the way I'm understanding it is that we are looking at what their next step is. So are you wanting to go to a four-year college or university? Are you wanting to go to technical school? Are you wanting to join the military? We look at that end result, and we try to align their coursework with that outcome. So we're not saying you have to go into the medical field, or we're not saying you have to go into fine arts. It's what is your ultimate educational goal or career goal for that next step, and then those are the courses that we have aligned with. We do have those basic North Carolina graduation requirements, so everybody gets those. And then based on that next step, we fill in those lepids, meeting those needs. And so that comes from student interest, student goals, and parent input. I'm not sure if I can answer that, no, I'm not, I can call, I can text somebody in.
I hope that a counselor can contact a parent in relation to kids just putting down Austin ends and really having no goals. They're meeting the high school requirements to graduate, but after that, they're doing a couple of classes and waitlist even in the class, and foods, and the class, and this, that, and the other. And they're leaving high school with no skills.
Well, I do think the addition of so many CTE courses and our partnership with Brunswick Community College has opened up a lot of courses for students to advance their interests and advance their goals for beyond high school. So I think we do definitely take the students' input, but we do have to involve our parents. And so I know that when I've been doing observations at the high school, I see parents in and out, and I've been in the office with parents who've called or have questions that have come through emails or, you know, out in the community. Somebody goes that I work with school counselors, and they'll ask me a high school question. So I think parents are very much involved, and we want to make sure that they are. And so I would say that, yes, parents are involved, and we do our best to make sure that they are part of that decision.
Well, we just want to make sure that high school kids are graduating with some skills and something where they can take care of themselves and not end up on food stamps or whatever. And to allow them just not setting the goals, I think is a mistake.
I agree, and I get, I get to keep referencing back to this new platform, but it does allow them to take the interest inventories, but to also decide educational goals based on, you know, some people just don't enjoy school. And so do I want to not have any additional education programs after I graduate? Or do I want to go and have my master's degree? So they're actually able to customize the program a little bit to help get them some specific goals, and then we help match the coursework to that. And again, the courses at the Coast and the courses through Brunswick Community College do open up a lot of interest for our students and a lot of opportunities that we haven't had before. So I think that we are doing a better job making sure we have those completed pathways.
Yeah, thank you so much.
All right, just to kind of, just summarize a few other things that counselors are responsible for. They do have morning and afternoon duties. Typically, at the high school, they are on multiple lunch period duties. That's a very busy time. If you've ever been in a counseling office during lunch, it is a revolving door, which is great, but it's when somebody's in a cafeteria that does limit our availability a little bit. And I do want to say that counselors are just like any other staff, and we all do our fair share, so it's not that we're complaining, I'm just listening to different responsibilities that we have. We do some test proctoring and administration, I think at EOGs, EOC, CTE exams, everybody's involved. But when we have some of those smaller pockets of testing, it does tend to fall on the school counselors. They are the at-risk intervention plan supports. They do, unfortunately, sometimes have to cover classes due to substitute shortages. They cover teachers for planning. They are, sometimes the MTSS school coordinator, we've tried to make sure that the school MTSS coordinator has specific experience, such as a classroom experience, so not all school counselors meet that criteria. They have their own website maintenance, they help build the master schedules, and then again, the student enrollment support that I mentioned earlier. I just, this would be for your reference if you're interested, but just how, I do have to say and publicly say that how proud I am of my school counselors. We are people-people, not technology people, but I think we've done a great job incorporating technology into our comprehensive programs since COVID. So we have been doing the Google classrooms, we've had office hours, virtual office hours for our students. They've been doing lunch bunch groups virtually, they've had parent support groups. We have been doing, in lieu of orientations, for like fifth grade to sixth grade, and eighth grade to ninth grade, they've been doing some virtual meetings for that. This specific is elementary, but they're very similar through middle school and high school. So really embracing technology, which is, can be very scary for people-people. For high schools, they were able to complete their registration, which is a task when you have people in front of you, so it's even more of a task when you're trying to reach them through emails or phones. But they have been able to complete the registration. So another point I was asked to address is the social-emotional component versus mental health counseling. So I wanted to start with, our school follows the CASL, the Collaborative for Academic, Social, and Emotional Learning definition for social-emotional learning. And that's the process through which children and adults understand and manage emotions, set and achieve positive goals, feel and show empathy for others, establish and maintain positive relationships, and make responsible decisions. So in order to teach it, there is the focus on five components: self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. School counselors do teach that as part of the classroom lessons and presentations that we offer. But our job is to also support other staff in teaching social-emotional skills as a preventive component. The higher the caseloads, the school counselor's role becomes more reactive to the social-emotional needs than preventive, and so the goal is to always be more preventive. Mental health counseling. So first, I like to just always put in a little plug, that everybody has mental health. We all have mental health, just like we all have physical health, but there is a spectrum. So you go from mental illness to mental wellness. So we want to keep our students in that mental wellness range by being more preventive and offering those social-emotional supports. However, we know that there are students that do require the more supplemental and intensive services. So mental health counseling is a tier three or intensive support, and we have the continuum of services that does include our school counselors. It does include our behavior specialists and our school psychologist. As stated in our ASCA ethical standards, school counselors aim to provide counseling to students in a brief context and support students and families or guardians in obtaining outside services if the student's need is long-term clinical counseling. So we do provide counseling, we can provide that mental health counseling, but ours is supposed to be short-term. So it is our ethical obligation to make sure we provide resources to families in the agency, in the community, excuse me, to help continue that long-term need. Our district does partner with the local agency to contract mental health services, so we're very fortunate to have that. They do come in and provide services to our students. And the district also has a local mental health provider resource list that we're able to provide to parents as part of our threat assessment protocol, but also just when a parent knows that their child needs some additional counseling. As with social-emotional learning, higher caseloads impacts our ability to provide effective tiered services. So when you talk with school counselors, you often hear, like, "I feel like I'm just putting out fires." And that does happen with the higher caseloads, unfortunately. We do want to be more preventive than a reactive state. So there were a couple of questions about my specific role with the district, so I've outlined some components here for you. I do advocate and support the school-based counselors, and again, we have thirty-one. I'm our district section five oh four coordinator, I'm our district individual student team coordinator, which is that tier two supplemental process. I am on the district MTSS team, I am our district positive behavior and intervention support coordinator, I am the crisis response team coordinator. I do coordinate and provide training on our threat assessment protocols to those facilitators. And then I'm available to assist and advise schools in those crisis situations. I'm available to provide support to school administrators, whether it's regarding enrollments or counseling needs or a threat assessment. I do manage the websites for the student support services in the school counseling and social work departments. Some scholarships do require a district-level panel, and so that's me. I schedule and place interns for school counseling and school social work. And then the course selection guide that we offer to our high schoolers every year is something that I help coordinate. I do create professional development for our school staff district-wide, so I have done the Child Abuse and Neglect Training, or FERPA in five oh four, so those are ones that I've created for us. And then I'm also trained as a trainer for PBIS modules. I do the Youth Mental Health First Aid, Darkness to Light, stewards of children, which is related to recognizing and responding to child sexual abuse. And then Talk Saves Lives, which is an introduction to suicide prevention. So all of those have been presented to district staff. And then another part of my job is the representative on community teams. I am on those, there's a bunch of them, JCPC, MDT, CFPT, lots of initials. If it has an initial, then I'm most likely on the team. I also have a direct role with school social workers and dropout prevention specialists. So I have five school social workers and two dropout prevention. I do the monthly meetings and the PD for them as well. And then I do work with schools on the attendance-related needs. We attend the monthly truancy court sessions with community agencies and court representatives. And then at the top tier of that support system, we have the criminal court proceedings for attendance law violations. Any questions about my role? Okay, I promise I'm getting close here. One other question that came up was the crisis response team for Brunswick County. Um, one other question that came up was the crisis response team for Brunswick County. So I do coordinate that, um, and unfortunately, um, there are circumstances in which we face a student or staff, um, death. There could have been a, a bus accident with injury, um, or just any other accident with life-threatening injuries. And so the crisis response team is notified, so I'm get, I'm called in, um, and then I'm fortunate enough to have 33 trained members that consist of counselors, behavior specialists, psychologists, social workers, and I have a few nurses actually that are still on the team. Um, and I coordinate the teams based on the need of the school. Some responses are larger than others. I coordinate it based on my team members' experience. Some are more comfortable with elementary, some are more comfortable with high school. And then, um, Waukamata-Leland is a very big area, so I also try to coordinate a team based on geography. So there's a, a lot of coordination that goes into it, but we show up that first day, um, and we provide psychological and educational debriefing. Um, I ride the buses, I, we monitor hallways, we do a lot of supports for staff and students. Just some data, if anybody's curious about our responses over the, the past few years. And just the difference that you may see between the number of responses versus the number of schools impacted is, um, there may be students from multiple schools or a teacher that has worked at multiple schools, so we, we provide, um, support at several sites. And that is all I have. Are there any questions or comments?
I have a comment, Ms. Lloyd. I'd like to say that, uh, thank you for your presentation, and secondly, uh, I'm glad you brought the statistics about what the state averages are and the local averages counts for per number of students. Your request, uh, one for Lincoln and Town Creek, now that they're one percent, one council for seven other kids, uh, I know that won't work, but you have my support to add a council for most of the schools. So thank you so much.
Thank you for that, thank you.
Ms. Lloyd, would you be kind enough to send the board members a copy of this presentation?
Be glad to.
Thank you, and thank you for all the information presented tonight.
It was a lot, sorry. And I appreciate your time, thank you.
Let me just add to that, I just want to, um, applaud Meredith on this presentation. Whether you know it or not, she's not one that likes to be in the front, she is a behind-the-scenes worker bee, so you did it.
Thank you, I did it, woo-hoo, in front of everybody and a camera. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, hold on a minute, we lost contact with the board member.
Are you back?
I'm back.
Welcome back, Mr. Ben.
Thank you.
So I think he missed the last half, you want to come back and do it?
She's going to send us a copy of the presentation in the event anyone missed it, including, um, Mrs. Cook, who could not be with us tonight due to the death of her mother. At this time, we will look at the approval of the meeting agenda.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I would like to add, um, and I don't know if I need to add it under action or discussion, but I would like to talk further, just briefly, about graduations. Um, should it be under action? I do intend to make a motion.
Yes, if it's going to make a motion.
So it'll be number two, under action?
Okay.
With that, I would, um, approve or make a motion to approve the meeting agenda.
I have a motion to approve with the addition of graduations under action items. Do I have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? Okay, motion carried. At this time, we will, um, look at the approval of minutes as presented. Um, May 5th, regular meeting, May 19th, Finance and HR Committee meetings, May 19th, Operations Committee meeting, May 19th, Curriculum Policy Committee meeting. Um, do I have a motion to approve?
Certainly.
Mr. Miller's made the motion, do I have a second? Okay, Mr. Lemon has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. We now have consent items for approval. We have quite a few of those, um, I will read, um, and then we can do one motion, I understand, for all the, all the items to approve.
Got a motion.
I'm sorry?
You had a motion, I think, too.
Oh, he's already made the motion.
Did somebody make a motion? I heard somebody say something.
Yeah.
Jerry, did you make a motion?
No, I did not make a, I did not make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have, um, 11, including the policies, and we have a motion by Mr. Lemon and a second by Mr. Miller. All in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Okay, um, motion carried. At this time, we will look at action items for approval. Number one, restroom renovation contracts, um, Stonehenge builders, West End renovations, and Port City builders, North End renovations.
Yes, ma'am, both of those are the low bidder, um, and we're just, uh, this is what we went over in operations, and we're asking for board approval to execute these contracts.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the execution of these contracts?
Certainly.
Okay, Mr. Miller has made the motion, do I have a second? Mr. Lemon is seconded. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Ms. Rowledge. Okay, Mr. Miller?
Um, why we have, can everybody, Jerry, can you and Ed hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. You know, why, we've heard a lot about graduations, um, and I applaud each school for what they, they did and what they tried to do. They tried to make it the best they could with the situation that we've been dealt. So I applaud each school with that. But there's a lot of people, not just with graduations, there's a lot of businesses hurting. You know, all these orders that are coming out, um, they're so vague. Um, but you know, I'm sitting here looking at, at Executive Order 141, and it says that education facilities are exempt, but then we get, Madam Attorney, I want you to pay special attention to this, because I'm going to ask, um, for you to do some research on it as well, but, um, you know, we have these sheets that are frequently asked questions, and that's not the order. The order says the educational facilities are exempt. So when you get a FAQ, does that trump the order? I say no. Um, so if the order says the educational facilities are exempt, then why can't we have a graduation? Um, the FAQ says this, it says Phase 2 lifts the stay-at-home order but strongly encourages individuals to maintain at least six feet social distancing from other individuals. It says, again, strongly encourages. Uh, Phase 2 also limits an event that brings together more than 10 people indoor and 25 people outdoor. Educational institutions are exempt from these mass gathering requirements. The intent of this exemption, well, if it was an intent of the exemption, why didn't they put it in the original order? You know, I hope everybody's seeing my point, um, you know, if, if he wanted to keep us from having graduations, then he should have said that we couldn't have graduations, not send out a sheet later saying that the intent of the order, well, if it was going to be part of the order, he should have put that in the order. Um, the intent of the exemption was to allow educational institutions the ability to gather more individuals together on their premises, if necessary, to support planning for summer learning and 2020, 2021 school year, which I appreciate that part of it, um, but is that, you know, that's going to allow our teachers to gather. Um, this exemption was not intended to allow for large in-person, uh, events such as graduation ceremonies, but accordingly, the governor's office and the Northland Department of Health and Human Services strongly recommend, well, there we go again, well, if this is going to be part of an order, put it in the order, don't strongly recommend it later. Um, strongly recommend that the local leaders continue to follow the COVID-19 guidance to the high school graduation ceremonies, originally issued on May 1st, 2020, and the recommendations to promote social distancing and to reduce transmission outlined in Executive Order 141. These continued efforts will support local education leaders as they mitigate the spread of COVID-19 when considering how to safely and responsibly honor graduating students. This response provides clarification on the mass gathering exemption for educational institutions, but it does not change or override the terms of any executive order. So the executive order, I'm going back to that again, it says educational institutions are exempt. It says it right here in the FAQ, does not override the terms of an executive order. Did y'all hear that? The attorney said that is correct.
The order stands, the FAQs do not override the order. That is the way it's written, even though it's vague, the order's vague, it is number one.
Yeah, so with all of that said, I want to make a motion, and, and with Superintendent Oates, you know, at our last committee meeting, he made a statement about getting each principal chip, I'm sure you can attest to this, y'all, y'all have done the best you can do with the situation, and I applaud you for that, and you too. But the executive order says that educational facilities are exempt. Now let's pick a date and have some graduations for these kids. I want to make a motion that we have the superintendent, work with our attorney to make sure we're legally clear, which the way I'm reading it, we are, to try to pick some dates and, or, let me back up, form a committee, like you said originally, at each high school. Each high school's different, folks. Each high school has their own way of doing graduations, and they've both got it perfected. I mean, you know, I, I stood at, at South Brunswick, which is the only one that I could attend because we wanted each board member to attend in their district. I've been on this board now for 13 years, and this was the first year that I have, and, and South Brunswick's my home school, which I love all of our schools, but I have shook every graduate's hand at South Brunswick High School for 12 years, and I took pride in that. This year I couldn't. And you know, I, I stood there and watched, you know, kids and, heck, I'm going to get emotional now, but, um, you know, I watched these kids come across and they couldn't do nothing. And I knew a lot of them, you know, they're from my community. So I don't even know where I left off on my motion now. A motion to instruct Dr. Oates to form a committee at each high school to pick a date, and let's have a graduation, and, and celebrate these kids, and the ones that want to participate, great, and the ones that have moved or, or whatever, that don't want to participate, then they've had something, they've had something with the virtual. So with that, does my motion make any sense, Madam Attorney? To instruct Dr. Oates to form committees at each high school to pick a date and plan a graduation ceremony, whether it be at Odell, or whether it be on these $800,000 football fields we just put in, which, that's where I graduated from, but it was not an $800,000 field at that time, it was dirt. But, um, let's plan a graduation, please. With that, I, that's my motion.
Madam Chair, I'll take a minute.
Okay. We have that motion by Mr. Miller, and Mr. Lemon has seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Discussion, discussion.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, discussion.
As the, the one member who's not there because they're in quarantine, I'm going to go ahead and say, uh, I'm opposed currently to it under the current, uh, state. I mean, I was in the ER, uh, with heart problems la, this last week, I had no, and they had five positive cases there just while I was there. I can't live with myself if we infect either the children or our staff just to rush this through for a couple of parents. I mean, I'm not saying not to do it, I'm not saying not to do it in August or late in July, but I don't want it to wreck Jerry to go ahead and do it now until the order comes, we, they come up to a phase three at least, and, uh, we, we see some sort of reduction. I just can't, I'll, I'm going to be honest, I missed my child's surgery today because of this, and, you know, that's weighing on me heavy that I, you know, I couldn't be there for my eight-year-old, and I, I couldn't live with myself if we made a single child sick. You're talking about, what, a thousand people at north or west out there on a field at least, or in a building?
Well, you give them the option, Jerry, they don't have to participate.
And, and one thing that I said too, I didn't say, I, I said just pick a date. It could be, it could be end of July, it could be August, but I want a committee formed, my motion is to form a committee to discuss and plan to when we can properly and safely have a graduation ceremony.
I'm fine with properly and safely, as long as we say it's not happening this month in June. We wait until the governor obviously approves and the health department's recommending it, I'm fine with that.
Well, I'll tell you what, um, our governor's been very vague with all these orders, uh, that's very obvious in what I just read, um, but, um, we got a motion and a second and discussion, so.
Okay.
This is for the committee, I think the motion is to set a date.
No, it's not to set a date. The, the motion was to, to form a committee and let that committee at each school determine when and how we can have a graduation, a safely and proper and safe graduation.
Right, that's all America being.
Absolutely, but let me, let, and I'm going to throw something else in here. You know, I've, I have been in Wilmington the last two nights with my job, and if I don't have it by now, Lord have mercy. Our world is NMS, and if we can do something positive to show these kids that we care, it's time.
Okay, so we have a motion, it has been properly seconded, we have had discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you all.
Thank you.
At this time, we will have discussion and announcements by the superintendent and our board members.
Madam Chair and board members, um, I just want to join you, Madam Chair, in your condolences to Ms. Cook and her family on the loss of their mother. Uh, they're going through a tough time, and I just ask that everyone pray for them as they go through this. Uh, also in regard to the graduations, the virtual graduations that we held last week, I'd also want to commend our principals, um, about the job that they did. We received a lot of good feedback as well, uh, for getting, um, getting through those, those virtual graduations, so to speak, um, and also to the board members that were able to attend, I appreciate your, your time in being there. Uh, they were all-day situations, um, but we, uh, felt that the students, of course, deserve that. Um, we were superintendents, or the state were scheduled to receive some guidance on reopening our schools for the 2021 school year. We were expected to go into a, a Zoom meeting tomorrow at 3:00. However, I just received notification, notification this evening at 5:30 that that meeting has been postponed until June 10th. At that time, I will provide, um, provide you, and also I spoke with cabinet on Monday about providing them as well the information that was supposed to come from that meeting, but since that meeting has now been postponed until two, um, till June 10th, uh, we will not be able to get that information out to you until then. Uh, we have no idea as to what it looks like. Um, as you probably are aware, uh, the state superintendent has formed a task force of superintendents and various others from across the state, um, to work in providing some guidance for reopening for next year, so I just wanted to make you aware of that. Um, the last thing that I-
The last thing that I have to speak on, and it kind of alludes to something that Ms. Bolt talked about earlier, which may have prevented some folks from being present here tonight. Today, we were made aware of a disturbing social media post by a former employee. It's by understanding that the person's Facebook page gave the appearance that they were current employees. However, they were not. This person essentially was no longer a Brunswick County Schools employee since last month, and made some, a post, of course, that was a little disturbing and could be seen as incendiary. I just want to go on record to say by no means does this former employee's post represent the beliefs or values of this Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Oates. Also under that item was the next regular Board of Education meeting scheduled for July 7th. At this time, I entertain a motion for a closed session.
So moved.
Okay. Mr. Miller, and a second, but, Mr. Benton, you seconded?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? At this time, we will move to closed session after a five-minute break.